I love the smell of night hum in the morning.
Why should you want to know? Don't you mind about the future?
And now, live, unedited, unrehearsed, and unapologetic. Brought to you by Imperial Fire Alarm and Security. Securing your world. Straight off the ledge, it's J.D. and Smitty!
This is The Ledge Radio Show with J.D. and Smitty on 96K Rock. The phone lines are open, 277 or 775-9600. Catch us streaming live video on theledgeradishow.com, or check us out on Facebook at facebook.com/theledgeradishow. What's up, Smitty?
Oh, boy, we have a big day today. A lot of news breaking with the Sandusky thing we're going to get involved with. We also have with us Lee County Commissioner Candidate Cecil Pendergrass. He's in the office with us today.
Yeah, Cecil, thanks for being here, buddy.
Thank you. Good morning.
I do want to thank our sponsors as we always do.
Go ahead, Smitty.
D Squared Construction, Cavendire. If you're looking to do some good renovations for your house, look for them on Google, D Squared. Cruz One, Mrs. Bachman out there, I always get her name wrong, but she's great.
Katie Bachman.
Katie Bachman, if you've ever taken a cruise, give her a call. It's Cruz One. And Imperial Fire Alarm and Security, securing your world. You can call them at 288-6482. That's 288-6482, or look for them on the web.
All right, thanks a lot, Smitty. And Cecil, we appreciate you coming in this morning. I know it's early, but you're used to it. You were City of Fort Myers Police for how long?
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years, retired from them. What made you decide to run for public office?
Well, you know... The twenty-sixth year.
Right? Efficient.
Well, you know, obviously, the last fifteen years of my life, I got really involved locally in the local government and politics and trying to do something right. Obviously, as an employee of the police department, I was restricted what I could do. I got tired of sitting back, just like everybody else in the audience, asking questions, not getting answers from the local politicians and even on the state level. So I decided to get involved. You know, we can't, can I make change unless we can evolve?
That's right. Now, the position that you're running for, the seat you're running for, is it a vacated seat or an open seat?
Yes, I'm running for District Two, which is the one that was recently vacated by Commissioner Bigelow, so it's an open seat right now.
So we can run too?
Anybody can run.
Man!
I don't run unless somebody's chasing me, so don't worry about me.
Then I'll bite them if they catch me.
Now, Commissioner Bigelow, he left because he's going, he's running for clerk. But now, there was another commissioner, and Smitty, I don't, you may, one of you guys may know the name. What was the guy that got up in the middle of the commission meeting and just walked out, like he retired on the spot?
That was actually Assistant County Manager.
Oh, okay, County Manager.
Bill Hammond.
What was his name?
Bill Hammond.
Yeah, I gave kudos to that guy. It was great. It was right in the middle.
You watched it.
It was great, it was great. If you've never seen it on YouTube, you've got to check it out. He's right in the middle of the function and all, and all the board members are there, and he just turns around nonchalantly and shakes hands with some people and puts his paper down, walks out, and it was, "What's up?" He says, and his quote, and I don't have it, I'll have to look it up, but I'll just basically say what he told.
Paraphrase.
Yeah, paraphrase. He said, "After so many years, you sit there and things go through your mind, you wonder, what are you doing there?" He says, "There's so much more to do in my life." He goes, "Why am I wasting my time?" And he walked right out. It was great.
Well, hopefully, it won't be a waste of your time, Cecil.
No, not at all. And that's it. I'm very energetic and will be engaged. Mr. Hammond, I think he just got fed up with what was going on in the local government. You know, basically, the commission just bickers back and forth and insult after insult each other. They don't move forward, we're moving backwards, spending our money.
Well, we'd fit in great, me and him.
Well, we could definitely bicker back and forth.
We insult each other on a daily basis.
Multiple times every day.
Yeah, he calls me the communist, I call him the Nazi, so it really works out well.
Very nice. Well, you know, if you get, if you do get elected into County Commission, I mean, what are you looking to bring to them that they don't have now? What can you, as Cecil Pendergrass, what can you bring to them?
Sanity.
Oh, there you go. Well, that's nice to have.
Basically, I want to work together. The Board of County Commissioners, most people think it's independent individuals, which it is, but you're one vote. You've got to work with four other people. You have to convince them to vote with you, and hopefully, it's the right way. My approach is basically, we need to move forward. We need to stop spending money. We need to bring business back here. We need, you know, work on our tourism.
What kind of money are they, when you say stop spending money, obviously, there are certain things the county has to do and has to provide. What areas can they save money in, where you've seen maybe a mismanagement of funds?
I wouldn't say a mismanagement of funds, I would say the way they go about the negotiations, for example. I know people are always talking about the ballparks. We need them, they're here, we're going to deal with them, we're going to, you know, bring people here for the ballparks. But if you look back to see how much money we're spending for the ballparks, I think more needs to be put back on the ballpark owners.
Okay, so we're giving too many concessions?
We are just giving way too much money away. You know, we need to be more involved in these negotiations. The county manager's office needs to be directed to, when these negotiations are going on, you know, these are our tax dollars.
Sure.
And penny counts.
Well, the latest thing was the new Twins contract. We had a thirty-year contract now, extension with the Twins. But I didn't hear the details of what we had to give up for that. Do you know anything about it?
No one knows.
I know they're going to put more seats in the stadium. I know that was a big deal, they needed more people.
Then we have to pay for that. We're going to provide it.
That's the deal, though. We pay for that, and then they bring more people.
Well, we guarantee they're going to be here for thirty years, that's great. We need that.
It's consistent.
To pay for the ballpark.
Sure.
We need to keep that ballpark open. It's like the one downtown is closed now. The problem I have with that is, what's the total cost?
And you said, "No one knows."
No one knows the total cost.
What do you mean? You mean, they voted just to approve with an open-ended contract?
Basically, to move forward with the renovations without a total figure how much is the cost of revenue is.
Man, I wonder if we can get in on that and see if we can build something over there, because I'd love that unlimited...
Imperial Fire Alarm and Security would be definitely interested.
Run the fire alarm, sure. Well, I tell you what, you know, I know there's a lot of other topics, you know, Smitty and I, we talk about stuff. There was the issue with the, but that was more of the city, though. Remember the waterfront thing?
Not to jump about the waterfront downtown, but you just mentioned that that stadium, Palms Park, is empty now. What is happening with that? Any news on that, or?
Is that the city or is that county stuff?
I mean, I knew they were going to put a swimming pool there, and then they were going to have something else.
Like an aquatic center.
Yeah, and I thought that was a good idea. I mean, it's a big piece of land, a lot of structure down there.
They're going to dig up the dirt and put in a swimming pool?
They could bring the canal in, I guess, right through.
The ditch.
The ditch, that's right. One-way swim.
With the red tide.
Right through the gulf, just swim.
Love that red tide smell in the morning.
Last I've heard, that ballpark is still, there's no contract, there's no type of private group coming in for that yet.
What a shame, what a shame.
It'd be obviously cheaper financially to use it for a ballpark. That's what it's designed for, that's what it's developed, and it's still very functional. I worked the last game there. It's, nothing wrong with the ballpark, you know, so I think there's more of the location was a problem there with the Red Sox. It wasn't, and also, when they built the ballpark in, you know, nineteen eighty-eight, they put the practice fields, Alpha Edison and Jacksonville, which is...
Quite a ways away, too.
Right, it was not practical to do that. But we have to remember something, we do not have baseball here. We have baseball practice.
That's true.
We have practice, it's not baseball.
Yeah, spring training.
Some people would dispute that, they love the baseball.
Yeah, we need it. It's here, we're going to deal with it.
Maybe they can have some kids come in and have tournaments there or something, you know, high school tournaments.
Well, they are, they're looking, their high school tournaments, college tournaments, they're using those facilities for that. But right now, the City of Fort Myers right now is paying for that until 2014. It's like fourteen million dollars left on it.
And then what happens at that point?
Right now, the county still maintains it.
Okay. Well, now, if, now, it's another hot topic that was mentioned lately, and actually, when we had Linda Doggett in, you know, she's running for county clerk, she's worked under the current clerk for many years, and seems to be really up to speed on a lot of the inner dealings of the county money and so forth. And she had mentioned, you know, we brought to her the issue with the land that the county's bought in the past. And I know that, there were some big, big, major disputes where they had audits and appraisals done of certain land purchases, and the county went ahead and approved the land purchases, but at like ten million dollars more than the appraisal.
Right, you're talking about the 2020 conservation project.
That might be it, that might be it.
Yeah, we need, first of all, the 2020, we need to look at it again, the whole program, because it's supposed to have been, you know, over with five years ago. We need to go back and reevaluate. First of all, the purpose of that initial was to obtain twenty percent of the property in the county for conservation. You know, I think we're up to twenty-five percent. There is other properties we still need to pick up. I just spoke last week at the 2020 meeting in reference to Lehigh Springs in Lehigh.
Lehigh Springs?
Yes, it's a small, I guess, pond, lake in Lehigh, if you've heard about it or not.
Where is this at? I live in Lehigh, I don't know many springs.
That's where the affluent live in, Lehigh, like you.
Yeah. It's got to be a swamp.
It's right off of Joel Boulevard.
He acts like he doesn't know.
For real?
Lehigh Springs, oh my!
It's one of these holes that wasn't a man-made diglet, thousands of feet deep.
What?
Yeah, and it's really, it's an area that we need to preserve, because we really don't know what's at the bottom of this thing.
Is it down at the end of Joel, on the left there by Eighteenth Street, and like the old rock pits, maybe?
I've been there before, I don't know, I can't remember exactly.
Okay. I'll have to look for this.
Yeah, but it's a big push right now to buy that property, just for, you know, it's right, it's a conservation area.
Well, let me ask you this, that, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm a negotiator, okay? And if I'm coming in, I've been looking at buying a new car for four months, and I still don't have it, because I'm very cheap.
Okay.
And I will keep going back and forth till I get the price of...
Frugal, frugal.
Well, frugal, that's why, my wife calls it cheap.
He said, "Cheap," I like it, I like cheap, man.
That's tough.
But, you know, here's the deal, we need, you know, like you said, are we paying for property? Not, we should not be doing that today, because the properties are, right now, lowest values they've ever been in the last twenty years. So we need to go, each piece of property needs to be appraised.
Yeah, each one evaluated, yeah.
Exactly. Now, they go through two, three different committees that does this. It's not just, somebody comes in and puts a deal on the table, says, "Hey, I want you to buy my property for twenty million dollars," and the county commissioner says, "Sure." It's a process, it goes through a process now. But I think for transparency, and to make sure the public understands what they do and why they do it, they need to just put it out there and say, "This is why we're doing it this way."
Okay.
We know why they do it, because somebody's in somebody's pocket.
Well, that's been some other contention. I mean, obviously, any time in the political realm, you're looking at someone, greasing someone else's, you know, hand or whatever, I mean, there's been some rumors about even the new Red Sox Stadium land being bought, you know, from someone's buddy, and, you know, there's always rumors like that, and I'm sure there's parts of it, at least part of it, has to be true. But I was driving through, coming back from LaBelle just the other day, driving on State Road Eighty, heading, you know, heading towards Lehigh, towards Fort Myers, and I passed by, you know, they've redone some of the roads out there, Eighty was, parts of it had been repaved a few years ago, and on the side of the road, they've got those retention ponds ever so often. And I used to take my son fishing there. You know, we used to go fishing in these little ponds, you know, just pull up on the truck and, you know, get out and fish a little bit. Well, now, of course, there's signs posted, "No trespassing, can't fish, can't swim, can't do nothing." Well, everybody complains about nothing, you know, that their kids don't have any programs, any government-provided programs. You know, the county, or the DOT, or whoever that built that pond, things like that, why aren't they not open to the public? They should promote that. Put a sign up that says, "Swim at your," or maybe not swim, but "Fish at your own risk," or whatever it is, but let people use that property. We've paid for it, it's tax dollars.
It'd be heck to grow up as a kid in today's society.
Could you imagine, when we were kids?
Oh, my gosh.
My dad would take me fishing, you pull off a little canal, you can go fish, there's no posted signs.
I live in, I live in a Dedet community, it's not gated, it's Dedet, it's nice, you know, it's not great, but it borders...
Whiskey Creek, don't fool you.
It's Tanglewood. Anyhow, so, anyhow, I live out there, and there's a golf course there, and it's an executive course, it's small, and they have signs posted, "No trespassing," because my neighbors' kids...
But that's private property.
Well, there's easements, and we're talking about people that live right there, not people from outer space coming in, or traffic coming in that aren't warranted, just local folks.
Well, I don't...
And these guys are posting signs out, and I think to myself, if I was a kid, you know, ten, eleven, twelve years old, and there's a little stream or pond, I mean, really, I wouldn't, I'd be ashamed of myself, you know what I mean, if I was an adult calling up about that.
I'm not going to complain about someone with private property putting up a private, you know, their own private property sign.
Because you don't live there.
But when you've got government-owned property...
Right.
That can be used for the community, but they don't.
It's just...
All they do is they close it, they close it, and they put fences around it, all the ponds, they've got fences around them.
Times have a change, man.
They spend a lot of money to put the fences around the pond, yeah. I've always wondered the same thing myself, I don't know if it's the state doing that, if it's the county, but I agree with you. My big thing is to get government out of the way, so private business can function, and citizens can function.
Well, the argument they make is, well, we'll get sued, you know, if Johnny slips and breaks his leg on a rock, they're going to sue me, that's the argument.
Well, you know...
Well, you're right, and the liability is really a big issue nowadays. I mean, you can sue anybody for anything.
Sure.
Even if you have a fence up, sign up, you can still sue somebody.
Well, amazingly, there's this one little mitigation pond, right next to a mitigation park on State Road Eighty.
Is that on Mitigation Road?
It's near Mitigation Road. No, it's a little pond next to the mitigation park. You can go into the mitigation park, you've got to pay like three bucks to donate to the county, so you can use their facility, and you can fish there. But you can't fish at the pond outside the gate next door, because there's a posted sign.
Says mitigating gate.
I don't know. I'm just saying, to me, that's a, you know, if you get elected, please look into that, because that would give thousands of kids and their dads things to do that they don't have to pay for.
Well, you know, I talked to some boaters the other day, and they said, you know, our biggest attraction here, nobody wants to realize, every day of the year, not fourteen days a year like baseball, is boating.
Yeah.
And there's only a few public boat slips here in Lee County they can go to, and I'm not a boater personally, I wish I owned a boat, but the ones I've talked to says, you know, you have to get there before the sun comes up, you've got to sit in line, you've got to get in fights in the parking lot to get your boat in the water.
I believe it.
You know, we need more public places for boating. That would draw more people here.
With all the water we have, all the waterways, and, I mean, that would be essential, I could, I definitely agree with that.
Isn't that hauling the water, you just throw money in, boat?
Well, a boat, yeah, well, but, you know, you can always get a, go to the boat clubs.
That's right.
If you don't own a boat, don't want to pay for a boat, go to the boat club, and they take care of it for you, and it's got an initial fee, you know, like three or four thousand dollars to buy in, but when you pay a monthly fee and they take care of it, they store it, they fix it for you, maybe we get them to advertise, and I'll tell them, tell everybody the name of one.
Yeah, there you go, there you go.
But, well, what else can we expect? You know, this is The Ledge Radio Show with J.D. and Smitty. Phone numbers are 277 or 775-9600.
Call in.
Yeah, we've got Lee County Commission Candidate Cecil Pendergrass in studio with us. You know, what else can we do to help this county, Cecil?
Well, you know, like I said, we need to get government out of the way, so private business can do business here in Lee County. Too many business people that I've talked to are just fed up with trying to do business here in Lee County, they're not business-friendly. We were back in the early eighties through the boom.
What do you think of some of the roadblocks that these local businesses see? Is it on the, in the initial stage during permitting, during, you know, trying to get their occupational license, trying to get their building built, any of that stuff, or just other forms of government intrusion?
Pretty much everything. One of the big things right now is impact fees. You know, we could, I said two years ago, we need to basically, you know, freeze impact-free fees for a couple of years to stimulate growth here in Lee County. But here we are, two years later, still haven't done that, you know.
You know, the general public doesn't understand what, may not understand what impact fees are, and I do. I worked in Collier County Government for a short time, and I know that, you know, when, say, a Walmart came to town and they wanted to build a new store, Publix or something like that, they would pay hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, in impact fees that the county would say, "Well, you're," basically, if you think of it, "You're impacting us, we're going to end up having to, you know, update the infrastructure, the sewer, you know, the roads, the school system, because of what, because of the impact of your building. So we're going to require these fees." Well, back in the heyday, that was, that seemed to be okay. Everybody would pay it, because they wanted to get their business built, but now, you've got no money.
They had, well, back then, impact fees were less, too, you know, right now, for average, home is around eighteen thousand dollars.
It costs a homeowner eighteen grand to, just in impact fees.
Right.
That's not wood and roof.
Right. And the highest right now is medical facilities, and second is fast food restaurants. Medical facilities are close to seventy percent of the building cost.
Is impact fees?
Yes.
So if a hospital or...
A private doctor, you want to build a new facility, you're going to be paying about sixty-eight percent of your budget on your construction for impact fees.
Where do they, how do they...
Assess that.
Yeah, where does that come from? I mean, what study do they do that, you know, would say that a doctor's office should, you know, should pay, you know, sixty percent of their building cost in impact fees?
You know, and there's two parts to this. Obviously, we want these vacant buildings out here, obviously, built, it's already been built, be occupied, that's the main thing right now. So I'm hoping a lot of businesses are taking the already existing properties. But to bring all those buildings up to code, okay, that's another nightmare. Trying to bring them to code and deal with the city or the county, wherever you're building, open your business at, you have to deal with that.
Yeah.
It's just, it's...
It's a double slam, you get the, you get the building fees, and you have the upgrades and the codes, and it's just too much.
Well, when you say, you know, bring it up to code, I mean, what, is it, you're finding that the businesses, maybe the shell, or the shell businesses sat there for so long, and they didn't have their, their fire alarm wasn't installed, or their exit lights don't work, or their, stuff like that, or even more major, even more expensive things?
Well, if it's major, if it just takes a shell of a building, you want to convert it into a restaurant that has frying equipment, for example, you have to have the sprinklers, you have to have the handicap exits, which we have, you're going to have to have that.
Sure.
You have to, to provide public safety. But it's the way the county goes about it.
Is it just not user-friendly?
Not user-friendly. You know, back in 2008, 2009, the state came up with a program, homeowner assistance for local governments to waive impact fees, and they were, gave the counties or cities that would have participated in this ten million dollars for funds.
If they were to waive some impact fees.
And Lee County did not participate in that.
Well...
Only seven counties and two cities in the state of Florida received funds for that.
I was going to say, you know, how many counties would turn down, would eliminate their own budget? I mean, because impact fees is a huge budget, it's a huge part of their budget, you know, and I think it gets over, I think it gets overused, I think it's abused. I agree with you a hundred percent, that if you want to stimulate growth, you've got to make it, you've got to make it more attractive for businesses to want to move here. And what business in their right mind would want to relocate from, say, Texas, where they've got an existing business, to southwest Florida, to Lee County, if the impact fees, it's going to cost them two hundred thousand dollars to put a building in here, just in impact fees?
Right, and they're looking at other things, they're obviously looking at the area, quality of life.
Sure.
Security, it's a big thing, affects their insurance, affects their employees.
All right, well, you know, we're going to, we're going to take a break. When we get back, we're going to keep Cecil for a few more minutes and just go over some more hot topic issues.
The ground.
Yeah, we'll be right back.
Hey, it's Sponge, come hang out with me, Zito and Garrett, Stan and Haney, at the Seminole Casino Immaculate, Friday night, June 29. VIP package is on sale now for only fifty bucks. It includes a twenty-five dollar food and beverage voucher, a K-Rock Live t-shirt, commemorative K-Rock Live poster to get signed, and a thirty-minute VIP-only session with me, Stan and Haney, and Zito and Garrett. But I like to call them Garrett and Zito, I like Garrett just a little bit more. Sorry, Zito. Limited number of VIPs available. This event starts at seven thirty sharp. You know where it is, buddy. 96K Rock.
Securing your family, your business, your property. That's what's important in your world, no matter how big, no matter how small. Secure your world with Imperial Fire Alarm and Security today.
Imperial Fire Alarm and Security is a local company with hometown service, the way it should be. One call to Imperial will align you with the most effective fire alarm, security, and surveillance systems, as well as state-of-the-art wireless monitoring. If you're a property manager or condo association member, ask about Imperial's wireless monitoring systems to replace costly and unreliable phone lines and save your community thousands, from individual homes to large communities. Imperial Fire Alarm and Security can secure your world.
Don't you think it's time to secure your world? Imperial Fire Alarm and Security services Lee, Charlotte, and Collier Counties. Learn more at imperialfiresecurity.com, or to schedule your free consultation, call 239-288-6482. Secure your world at imperialfiresecurity.com.
License number EF200046.
Honey, I've got a surprise for you.
Really?
We're going on a cruise. I called Cruz One in the Cape and spoke to Katie Bachman. She hooked us up. We're going first class on the Norwegian Pearl for a seven-night Caribbean cruise getaway.
Man, I'll be relaxing on the deck and sipping on those umbrella drinks.
That's okay for you, honey, but I'll be getting lean and fit. This cruise offers more than twenty hours of personal training fun with Joe Pearson. I'll be learning about nutrition and exercise, and all from a certified personal trainer. It's the best of both worlds. When you cruise Norwegian-style, you do more than just eat and drink, you can get in shape and have the time of your life.
This is an exclusive offer for June only. Norwegian Pearl and our Seafit Group package for friends and family. So call me and get the skinny details. I'll explain all package and special offers. Life is too short, so get away and enjoy it. Go in style, Norwegian style.
Call Katie at Cruise One on two-three-nine-six-seven-seven-three-zero-zero-five. That's two-three-nine-six-seven-seven-three-zero-zero-five. Or visit our website at k-bachman.cruiseone.com.
When it comes to finding a reliable general contractor, you need to pick someone with a solid background and a good reputation. D Squared Construction gives you all that and more. They are family-owned and operated and stand behind every project. Quality workmanship and satisfaction to the customer has made them one of the premier contractors in southwest Florida since 2004. Small residential renovations to large commercial projects, they do it all, and they do it all well. Your projects are much too important to trust just anyone. D Squared Construction will come to your house or commercial project and give you a free onsite estimate. Call Cav and Dwyer at two-three-nine-five-six-one-four-one-zero-eight. That's two-three-nine-five-six-one-four-one-zero-eight for a free consultation and some good, sound advice. They won't waste your time or your money. D Squared Construction, when it needs to get done, right.
Why should you want to know? Don't you mind about the future?
Welcome back. The Ledge Radio Show with JD and Smitty on ninety-six K-Rock. The phone numbers are two-seven-seven or seven-seven-five-ninety-six-hundred. Check out our live stream at theledgeradioshow.com. You can also find us at facebook.com/theledgeradioshow. And returning with us for this segment is Lee County Commission candidate Cecil Pendergrass. Cecil, we appreciate you coming back with us. We want to touch on something, no pun intended. Jerry Sandusky found guilty yesterday, forty-five of forty-eight counts.
That's all, just forty-five counts?
Of child abuse in various forms.
Well, he got off easy.
Forty-five, yeah, forty-five Sandusky hugs in the shower.
That's tell. It's crazy.
Unbelievable. What do you think about that? I mean, you were, you know, you were a cop for twenty-five years. I mean, you probably had to...
Seen it all.
You've seen a lot of this kind of stuff.
Yeah, it's sad. I feel really bad for the victims, the families of those victims, because, you know, at the end of the day, this gentleman, Mr. Sandusky, he doesn't think he did anything wrong. You know, I was involved with the Dateline sting here we did about eight years ago.
I remember that.
I love that show when they were stinging them guys. That was great, man.
It's a whole different, it's a wake-up when you meet people like that, because what happens is to them, they think they're doing the right thing.
They don't know that it's wrong.
They do not understand what they're doing is wrong.
They have a personal medical imbalance there. That's what they claim, you know.
That's why he was so, when he came out with the interview...
Like adamant about...
When he came out with the interview, and you could tell on his face, he was not trying to hide anything he didn't want to talk about, because what he's doing, he thinks is okay.
Are they just so out of reality that they just don't realize it? Or, I mean, you know...
Well, if you're a heterosexual male, and you get accused of having sex with a woman, how would you react to that? Well, yeah.
Yeah, I did. What's wrong with that? So to him, he says, "I didn't do anything wrong." You know, it was just playing around, horsing around in the shower.
Right. And it's kind of like the Michael...
Well, you know what? Here's what's gonna, I hope, I hope that they put him in general population, and that somebody horses around with him in the shower at the federal pound-you-in-the-ass prison. That's what I want.
Nice. Dun 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 dun.
That's all I can say, man. That's all I can say.
Come and play some Motown music. I feel some love coming on now.
That's from Office Space. It's a great movie.
What's really disturbing about that is the people that he worked with that knew what was going on and hid it. That's the sad part. The people that knew what was going on within the institution...
Well, this has been going on for many, many, many years. And afterwards, like we were talking at dawn break, even one of his sons that he adopted, you know, came forward and said, "Hey, something was going on here, too." But, like you said, maybe his sons could have said, "For some reason, these guys seem to slip through the cracks." And they just, you know, next thing you know, the son comes up, and another guy comes up, and another guy comes up.
Well, this guy had a lot of power. He had a lot of power.
It comes back to power and money, basically. Even his wife, I'm sure why she's standing beside him is because of the power and the money.
Do you think she really believes that he didn't do it?
No. I mean, come on, seriously. I mean, how could she not?
I guess she not.
I just thought maybe he just had her so buffaloed that she just thought he just walked on water.
She was doing that for the case. I'm sure they're trying to get a less sentence or something, at least to say what they have now.
He's facing like thirty or forty years.
No, it should be life. I think it's life. Facing life. It should be life. You have forty-five counts.
Public hanging.
Well, yeah, I've got my own thought on that.
That's craziness.
I won't bring it up. I'll put it on Facebook later. But, well, that was a big issue. We're glad that that's behind us. Now, we can, we'll look forward to the multiple appeals, the, you know, ten years of appeals, and the, hopefully, they'll give him a really strict punishment, but I know he's gonna appeal it for years.
If you have an opinion on this, feel free to give us a call. Two-seven-seven-ninety-six-hundred or seven-seven-five-ninety-six-hundred.
You know, Cecil, before we let you go, I know you've got a busy day today. Where can people go to support your campaign? You have a website set up?
Yes, I have a website. It's votependergrass.com. And just so you know, I'm running for District Two, but it's a county-wide race. So everybody in Lee County, from Alva to the beaches, to Pine Island, to Lehigh, can vote for him.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so it's a county-wide race. And so, main thing is to get the people out to vote. You know, if you look at the other candidates in my race, they've already been voted out of office or fired from the county, and the counties move forward. It's really important we move forward today.
And it's important to mention, you've never held public office, right?
No, I'm not incumbent, no.
So a lot of, and that's a big deal these days. A lot of people are looking at getting incumbents out of office, getting new blood in there, someone that hasn't screwed it up before, at least to give them a chance to screw it up on their own.
Right. And the good thing in my race for the public is it's only two years left of the term, so it's gonna be a short window opportunity. Give me a chance. Let me get in office, show you what I can do for them.
Is that why it's a county-wide race, or is it always like that for county commissioners?
It's always a county-wide race at large, so you can vote on all five county commissioners.
Do they, do all five, are all five always up for election at the same time? Or do they kind of intermix them, you know, every couple of years?
It's every two years.
Every two years?
Yes.
Well, you know, before we let you go, we got a call, a caller on the line here. Caller, you're on The Ledge Radio Show with JD and Smitty. What you got for us?
Hey, bud, how's it going?
Good.
Hey, I really hope this Cecil guy, I mean, from what I'm hearing him talk about, I probably ended up voting for him, but I really hope he takes that attitude that, you know, we all do need to work together to make things work. We're all not gonna agree on every single issue.
Absolutely.
You're gonna have to bend and give a little bit. And I think me and you have had these private conversations about this before, JD.
Yeah, we did. It was not in the shower, though. I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that.
Does Sandusky shower?
I don't know why you always bring those home.
It might have been at Hooters or something, but...
Could have been, could have been.
All right, Brian, we appreciate the call, man. You guys stay safe.
Brian, thank you.
That's Brian, Brian's firefighter at the Big Corkscrew Island Fire Department, representing Big Corkscrew. We appreciate his hard work out there and the lifesaving that he does. And, you know, it kind of goes right along with, you know, the work that you used to do. I mean, I know you had to work side-by-side with a lot of the firefighters at the city of Fort Myers.
Oh, yes.
And it's a tough job, man, both of them.
Can't we all just get along?
Yeah.
Famous words of...
I always enjoyed those guys running the burning buildings for me.
While you were running out, right?
Yeah, running out, trying to get everybody else out of the building. But, you know, yeah, we all have to work together. And like I said, the county commission, I've been involved in the last twenty-five years. People know what I've done, and I have different opinions of people. I've stood up for people, and, but at the end of the day, we have to work together. And I have really thick skin, so I can have a disagreement with someone, and two minutes later, go to lunch with them, have a great day.
You know, you mentioned, I think, I don't know if it was before we came on air or while we were on air, that you see a lot of the, you know, in the Lee County Commission, the guys just going after each other. It's a lot of attacks, you know, that it seems like they don't get anything done because they're just, you know, they're insulting each other.
Attack mode, attack mode.
I guess.
Yeah, it needs to stop. I mean, seriously, it needs to stop. And I think with Commissioner Bigelow participating in a lot of that, I think him leaving office is gonna help a little bit of that. But, you know, we need to stop, forget about the past, and move forward. We need to move forward, and look at what we need to do with the county. We need a plan. We need a tourism plan, long-term, one-year, five-year, fifteen-year plan.
Sure.
To continue bringing people. We have a thirty-year bond on the new ballpark. We need to pay for that. We need to bring people here, fill those rooms. You need advertisers.
Yeah.
You know, we need to create business here.
We do need advertisers, so call the station. It's for, you want to sponsor The Ledge Radio Show.
Just go to our website. You can email us.
We take free sponsors, man. Help us out.
Free? What do you mean a free sponsor? No, we take paid sponsors.
You know, free to call us.
Okay, yeah, it's a toll-free number. There you go, that's what I mean. We're giving you a free, toll-free number to call us.
Sponsor us.
Or go to the website, and you can email us if you want to be a sponsor of the show.
We could use some help.
What are some last thoughts that you can give these voters to remember you by when it comes time for election? Anything, any, you know, hot topics that, you know, just the things you stand for that you're gonna help us out with?
Well, first of all, make sure everybody votes in August. Our primary's on August fourteenth, so you can actually have some early voting. August fourteenth is the main thing, because our election's basically worth in August. I know a lot of people are gonna wait and vote in the presidential primary. The local races are more important. You, we're actually gonna affect your life more daily than anybody else is going to.
Now, is it, is your election essentially over in August because you don't have, is it because there's no Democrat running, or is that just when this is being done?
There is two other parties, two other people running, nonpartisan and a writing candidate we were running against in November.
Okay.
But I personally have not met either one of them yet or knew who they are, so I'm not sure what their plans are as far as how much they're gonna campaign up to November. My main goal, obviously, is to win the Republican primary here.
Get the vote out in August fourteenth for the local guys, and, you know, hopefully we can start steering this ship in the right direction.
Oh, it's crazy. It really is, and that's why I'm running for office.
Well, we appreciate you being here, Cecil, and feel free to hang out as long as you want. Smitty and I are just gonna kind of chalk it up here with a couple of the other top issues of this past week, and even maybe from yesterday. But we appreciate you being with us, and maybe we'll have you on again sometime.
And thank you for your service.
I appreciate that. Thanks, Cecil. All right, Smitty.
Well, just, we were talking about the Sandusky thing, and I just was looking through the web. Obviously, there's a lot of that stuff kind of goes on, and there was a story in Texas. A father actually kills a man who was raping his daughter. A young Texas father.
Yeah.
He beat this guy to death with his fist after molesting his five-year-old daughter. Apparently, she was at the farm, and his name was, I won't say Jesus, it's Jesus Mora Flores. He was forty-seven. And he took the girl forcibly into the field, and the father...
Was molesting her.
Father was alerted and, you know, panicked.
Went out to find her.
Found her. The gentleman had his pants down, and it was confirmed, and he beat this guy to death and killed him. And they...
I have no problem with that whatsoever.
No, no.
Swift justice.
It was swift justice, and they even have a law out there in Texas that says they can do that. So...
Well, who would not have a law saying you can't, you can't, you know, defend your family with the utmost, you know, effect? I mean...
I don't know, it says the father was authorized to use deadly force to protect his daughter, plain and simple.
All right, here, let's get Cecil's take on this.
I mean, that's just incredible that goes on.
It's called stand your ground.
Is that the same one? Is that what they had out there?
No, I'm just joking. But seriously, and that's, as a parent, I mean, that's...
If that happened to anybody, any parent in their right mind, they would do, they would use whatever force necessary to protect their family. If you don't have a shovel in your hand, or a gun in your hand, or a knife in your hand, you're gonna use your hands.
A few years ago, there was an, I don't know if it was maybe ten, fifteen years ago, there was a guy in Louisiana, I think, and his son was abducted by the karate instructor.
Okay.
And he took him away, and of course, they sure molested him. Well, they caught the guy. They were bringing him to court, and the father was on the phone...
At the airport.
At the airport, waiting for him to walk by, and when he did, the father just pulled out a gun, and shot him point-blank range, right in the head, and killed the guy.
And then turned himself in.
And then turned himself in, just dropped the gun, and held him, and asked for a jury trial.
Yeah.
And he went to like one of the parishes in Louisiana, I think, maybe I'm wrong, it's Louisiana, but, and they said, "Yep, absolutely, let him go."
Right. Because it was like a crime of love or something like that?
Absolutely. It was just, it was, you know...
There was that movie with Samuel L. Jackson and Matthew McConaughey.
Snakes on a Plane?
No, no, not Snakes on a Plane. But basically, something similar where, you know, in the movie, Sam Jackson's daughter was raped and...
I saw that, and chained up and everything like that. It was some weird thing going on there.
And so, he shot, and either killed or attempted to kill the culprits in that issue, and...
Fifty-two Shades of Grey.
No, it wasn't that one. But eventually, you know, in the movie, they found him not guilty, because they all sided with him. They said they would, the jurors felt they would do the exact same thing, and had, you know, felt no guilt was...
Absolutely. Could you even imagine walking down to the field and seeing your kid?
Well, let's shift gears to something a little happier. You know, obviously, everybody that watches basketball knows the Heat won. They won the NBA championship in the fifth game. It was a blowout. It was like one-twenty-something to, you know, ninety or a hundred. I mean, it was like a twenty-something point win, but...
Kudos to those guys, man.
Yeah, what I liked about it, you know, even though the Heat, you know, they're still kind of a young team, too. They've got some aging guys on there. They've got some guys that are, you know, mid-season, you know, they've been there eight, nine years, you know, been in the sport, so they're not brand-new guys right off, right out of college, and, you know, they handed it to the Thunder, man.
But your star player was?
Well, I, me personally, just in that last game, I am a Gator fan. Mike Miller, off the bench with twenty-three points. He went seven-for-eight for three-pointers. Who does that?
That's like having bases loaded, bottom of the ninth, you're down by two runs, there's two guys on, and you're up with three-and-two count, and you throw, boom, and hit the ball, and it's a homerun, you win the game.
Homerun, win the game. But in this case, now, I know LeBron, you know, I'm sure he deserves MVP for the entire series. But this guy, Mike Miller, coming off the bench for twenty-three points in a game where they won basically by about that much. To me, that guy, he stepped up, because, who was it? Dwyane Wade went out early with the foul trouble. They had to pull him out at like his second foul in like thirty seconds. So Miller comes on and shoots like, man, it was, that was crazy. I keep seeing him, and I'm going, "Oh, don't shoot another three. Don't shoot another three," because most of the time you miss.
And then they started going in, boy.
And I'm like, "Man, every time I give it to this guy, he shoots a three, and he makes it."
He's like, "I'm gonna prove to you that I'm worth the twenty-five million you're paying me for this."
Well, you know what's amazing about that? They just signed him to a new five-year deal at five million a year.
Like last year.
But he's got, he's a twelve-year veteran.
Yeah.
And he's got a bad back. But they're, I guess they saw him shooting in practice, man.
He can obviously shoot the ball. He was actually drafted by Orlando Magic, and then he went to the Grizzlies, and he went to the Timberwolves, and he went to the Wizards, and then he went to the Heat.
Well, I guess we're glad we got him at the Heat.
Man, I tell you, boy, he earned every penny.
Well, they did a good job. It was...
Can you imagine the coach looking back and going, "Who do I got? Miller! Come on, Miller, you're in." You know, and then Miller comes in and just lights it up. You gotta love it.
He was shooting like Steve Kerr, man.
You gotta love it. It's great, man.
Well, I know we got another big topic that was this week, that came out this week, and I couldn't get the audio for it. I've got the audio, but there were, the audio is so bad, the language is so filthy from these kids.
I know where you're going with this. This is horrific.
Yeah, the school bus monitor, sixty-eight-year-old grandmother of eight gets berated on a school bus by these middle-school kids.
And they're twelve and thirteen.
Twelve- and thirteen-year-old kids, and they were stupid enough to videotape themselves doing it, so they could put it on Facebook.
My father would put the belt on it and get a bed slat of wood and whip me with it. I'm telling you.
These kids, you know, they called her every name in the book. You know, they were using all kinds of sexual connotations with her. They, you know, one of them said that they would stab her with a knife, that they would break into her home, and she just sat there crying on the bus.
And what's worse is somebody, one of the kids apparently was saying something like, "That's why people don't like you and want to kill themselves and all that stuff."
That's why they're by yourself, and she just had a family member commit suicide.
Right. And she had her son commit suicide a couple of years ago, and, oh my...
One of the kids said, one of the kids said, "You're so terrible, your kids should kill themselves."
What would your father do to you if that would have been you? I mean, really? Think about it.
I guarantee that. I would have never been able to ride the bus again. I wouldn't have been going to school again. I'd probably be buried in the backyard. You know, because that's embarrassing to the, just, that's ridiculous, man.
Oh, my. I can't even fathom. Well, first of all, I would never have done that, but my parents were...
What caused that? What caused that, Smitty?
I think that's a moral breakdown in the household. I think that's a moral...
Lack of respect.
Yeah, I think it's a moral breakdown. I remember when I was like, nah, I was like five-years-old, six-years-old, and we were playing like little kids, little kids, and, you know, running around with the girls and boys, and I just, I slapped a little girl, just goofing all five-years-old. My father made me walk down, apologized to her at five-years-old.
Oh, yeah.
And I stood in the door, and he says, "Just tell her you're sorry." And I said, "I'm sorry, but I don't mean it." I turned around, walked away, and he smacked me in the head and beat me all the way to the street. So, you know...
Well, if anybody's out there got, you know, got any comments on this story, give us a call.
Believe me, working, the job I worked in for twenty-five years, it comes back to the home life, basically.
Oh, absolutely.
You saw it, didn't you?
People lack of respect.
And I think also a breakdown in morals. I mean, when you talk about religion and church and stuff like that, you know, they teach these things into you when you're younger.
That's why kids are killing each other. They have no respect for each other. They have no respect for life. And this, the sad thing, if this wasn't videotaped, we would never have known about it.
That's right.
And it still, it happens right now. It's happening across the country.
You know, when I, I'm thirty-six-years-old, and when I was a kid, you know, if we disagreed with another kid, and there was a, you know, you had a big scuffle, you would fight it out. You'd fight it out, and you'd go about your business. Today, I'd be afraid to go against a kid, because I guarantee he's probably got a gun.
Or a knife.
You know, or a knife. Because they're not, these kids are pansies. They can't fight like we used to be able to.
Well, we don't want to advocate fighting, but I mean...
I'm just saying, they don't settle those disputes the same way anymore.
Yeah, but even little kids, even, you're talking about fighting, there was instances, we grew in a neighborhood, it was about eighty boys, and when kids would get in a fight, you would go home to your mom or dad and tell them what happened. The parents would call each other. The parents would say, "Hey, Joey, hey, Freddie, what's going on? Yeah, your boy threw a rock and hit my kid in the face." And he goes, "He did what?"
Right.
And you would hit with the throwing the rock. And it was to the point where, you know, the parents kind of took initiative, and he says, "I'm sorry, Joey, you know, I'll take care of this for you." And you could hear him in the background, you know, getting beat or getting, and then And you could hear them in the background, you know, getting beat, or getting, and then they would make the boys meet up in the street and say, now tell them you're sorry.
Sure.
You know, and, and literally shame him down to the point where you, you realized, you know, it was a jerky thing to do. And then later on, of course, you were playing football in the field, but, you know.
We're gonna, we're gonna go to break here in a second.
277-9600, or 775-9600. Give us a call if you have a thought on that, and, uh, when we come back from break, you can give us a holler.
All right, thanks, guys. We'll be back in just a minute.
96K Rock supports Southwest Florida's bikers with the Biker Map.
Hey, this is Chris with the Biker Map. Be sure to look for the spring edition of the Biker Map.
The Biker Map lists and directs you to biker-friendly bars, restaurants, bike shops, and more.
The Biker Map.
Grab a copy by stopping by K-Rock Broadcasts, and always at the K-Rock Studios in Astero.
I just want to say thank you to Southwest Florida and all the advertisers for supporting all the motorcycle riders out there.
The Biker Map.
Be sure to make the most of your ride.
The Biker Map.
From 96K Rock and 96krock.com.
Honey, I've got a surprise for you.
Really?
We're going on a cruise. I called Cruise One in the Cape and spoke to Katie Bachman. She hooked us up. We're going first class on the Norwegian Pearl for a seven-night Caribbean cruise getaway.
Man, I'll be relaxing on the deck and sipping on those umbrella drinks.
That's okay for you, honey, but I'll be getting lean and fit. This cruise offers more than 20 hours of personal training fun with Joe Pearson. I'll be learning about nutrition, and exercise, and all from a certified personal trainer. It's the best of both worlds. When you cruise Norwegian-style, you do more than just eat and drink, you can get in shape and have the time of your life.
This is an exclusive offer for June only. Norwegian Pearl and our Seafit Group package for friends and family. So, call me and get the skinny details. I'll explain all package and special offers. Life is too short, so get away and enjoy it. Go in style, Norwegian style.
Call Katie at Cruise One on 239-677-3005. That's 239-677-3005. Or visit our website at k-bachman.cruiseone.com.
Securing your family, your business, your property. That's what's important in your world. No matter how big, no matter how small, secure your world with Imperial Fire Alarm and Security today.
Imperial Fire Alarm and Security is a local company with hometown service, the way it should be. One call to Imperial will align you with the most effective fire alarm, security, and surveillance systems, as well as state-of-the-art wireless monitoring. If you're a property manager or condo association member, ask about Imperial's wireless monitoring systems to replace costly and unreliable phone lines and save your community thousands. From individual homes to large communities, Imperial Fire Alarm and Security can secure your world.
Don't you think it's time to secure your world? Imperial Fire Alarm and Security services Lee, Charlotte, and Collier counties. Learn more at imperialfiresecurity.com, or to schedule your free consultation, call 239-288-6482. Secure your world at imperialfiresecurity.com.
License number EF2000046.
When it comes to finding a reliable general contractor, you need to pick someone with a solid background and a good reputation. D-Squared Construction gives you all that and more. They are family-owned and operated, and stand behind every project. Quality workmanship and satisfaction to the customer has made them one of the premier contractors in Southwest Florida since 2004. Small residential renovations to large commercial projects, they do it all, and they do it all well. Your projects are much too important to trust just anyone. D-Squared Construction will come to your house or commercial project and give you a free onsite estimate. Call Kevin Dwyer at 239-561-4108. That's 239-561-4108 for a free consultation and some good, sound advice. They won't waste your time or your money. D-Squared Construction, when it needs to get done right.
What's the buzz, tell me what's happening? What's the buzz, tell me what's happening?
Why should you want to know? Don't you mind about the future?
Welcome back, Ledge Radio Show with J.D. and Smitty on 96K Rock. The phone numbers are 239-277-9600, or 239-775-9600. Well, the reason why I put the area code in there is because, uh, your sister just, just Facebooked me and said, you want, may want to put the area code for people listening around the country.
She's crazy.
Where's she listening from? Is she Baltimore, DC?
Baltimore, DC area.
That's awesome, man. Well, check, you can check out the live stream at theledgeradioshow.com. You can also find us at facebook.com.
She loves me.
Or slash the Ledge Radio Show. I know she does.
Just to talk about, not to reiterate what we were talking about, that woman, Karen Klein, she was 68-years-old that, that got, uh, abused on the, the bus.
Yeah.
But there was a silver lining to the story.
Yeah.
And the silver lining is, there was a, a young man who started a webpage for her, and originally, they were gonna send her on a vacation if they could get a, a few dollars to help her out.
Yeah.
It turned out she did get a few dollars.
How much did she get so far?
So far, last, last told, $500,000.
Man.
That's a heck of a vacation. I'm talking around the world.
How can we, how can we hook, get ourselves hooked up with something like that?
If anybody wants to contribute to our vacation...
I will abuse you like there's no tomorrow if we can get some money for that.
He beats me like a bad habit every day, and I take it, and I, I'm, I'm ready to go to, you know, some therapy, but I need money. I need money. So, send us an open check, you know, I'll take five, 10 bucks. I'm not greedy, you know?
All right, we got a caller on the line. Caller, you're on the Ledge Radio Show with J.D. and Smitty. What you got?
Yes, hi. Um, I'd like to comment on what happened on the bus, uh, with the, uh...
Yes, ma'am.
... attendant. I think that is definitely a breakdown, uh, in respect. I think that, uh, and I think it starts at the top, to be honest with you. I think it starts at the top. I think it's what kids and people see in general that are, that it's, all of a sudden, it's okay. And, um, I mean, whatever, uh, you think about, even, even the President of the United States. I know this show, from what I listen to, I know it's right-leaning, but that's still...
I'm, I'm not right-leaning, I'm center.
You got Smitty.
Well, I've only listened to it a few times.
Well, thank, thank you.
It seems like it's right-leaning, but anyway.
That's him.
Um, that's still the President of the United States of America. And when you see in a congressional address, uh, some, a congressman screaming, "You lie", when a, when a president lands in a state, and you see the governor of that state pointing, sticking her finger, shouting at the president. I mean, I, the disrespect starts at the top, and no matter what you may think about this president, we elected him to be our leader. A majority of people have elected him to be our leader, and there's still, uh, it starts at the top, and I feel that no one has any outrage about that.
I do.
And I, I just, I just think it's disgusting. That is our president, it's the President of the United States, and the office still deserves respect, and that's what people see. And it's, it's happening all over, but it starts at the top.
I just want to say how much, how much I, I just want to say how much I love you right now.
Thanks, thanks caller.
Thank you for saying that, because I've been saying that to him forever, and you're right, J.D., um, you know, it's no secret, he does lean right, but, you know...
Yeah, but here's the problem, though. It's not the, the president i- is not why these kids acted this way. That's because they're parents.
No, but she's saying it's, it's, it's in the whole media, it's everywhere you see it. It's a breakdown of morals.
It's personal, personal responsibility.
It's a breakdown of morals all around, across the board.
I'm not even gonna comment about the, the congressman yelling out, "You lie", because he was telling the truth, so I don't care.
She was just talking about being respectful to the...
And it happened before, it, it happened the same way when President Bush was in office, same way.
They threw shoes at him, I'm remembering.
That was, that was a Muslim that threw shoes. It's a Muslim reporter.
[mumbling]
All right, we got, we got another caller on the line. Caller, you're on the Ledge Radio Show with J.D. and Smitty. What you got?
I just wanted to weigh in on this conversation about the bus.
Yes, please.
Um, I think part of the problem is, um, I think what the bus driver could have done is, uh, pulled off the side of the road, um, called the principal or the, uh...
Police.
... this question, and, uh, just said, "I'm not moving this bus until the parents of these kids come to this bus stop, or this store, or parking lot where they..."
That's a great idea, great idea.
And I, because I'm in an education for 30 years, I am still convinced the only way to correct the behavior of children is to inconvenience the parents.
That's, that's probably right.
Very simple, and that's it.
Well, we appreciate the call, uh, caller. That's, that's a good point.
He makes a good point. The whole time the video was going down, where was the bus driver? What were they doing? Were they just like not taking...
They've, they've got a 68-year-old grandmother as the bus monitor. I mean, and, and on that bus, you, you need like a six-foot-four frickin' cop on there.
That's as bad as when I flew into Tampa, they had the one-eyed TSA agent out there looking for security.
One-eyed?
Yeah, one-eyed, they had one eye. And she goes, "Somebody got by? Did you see him?" She looked at me with one eye, and went, "Oh, Lord. Oh, Lord."
Well, when I was...
I was praying myself.
When I was a kid on the bus, boy, I didn't have bus monitors.
One-eyed TSA agent.
But that, that bus driver, he would pull the bus over, and if he didn't throw you off the bus, he would radio in, they had the CBs or something back there. And, and they would, you're, either your parents had to come, or, or they would bring the cops to haul you off that bus.
See, that's the old-school way, and I, and I'm telling you, we gotta get back to that old-school way. Like you were just saying, the bus driver would say, "Come here, son, what's your father's name? What's your mother's name?
Yeah.
Uh, where do you live?
Let's call him right now.
And he would call him.
I had a bus driver that, that took me back home.
There you go. Take you back and say, bring your dad out, say, "Give me tell you what your boy was doing, and man, you got ripped."
I'm with it, I'm with it. All right, we got another, another call. Caller, you're on the Ledge Radio Show with J.D. and Smitty. What you got?
Yeah, we want to call in about, uh, just the behavior.
Absolutely. What you got? Can you turn your radio down a little bit?
Turn your radio down a little bit, buddy.
Sure, sure.
Go ahead. What, what you got for us, buddy? Caller, you there?
Lost him.
No, caller's gone.
Uh, we had a technical glitch and it hit you in the giddy up, so if you want to call back, um, please do. We're sorry, apologize, and that's what happens when, when you have guys like us over here.
We might have him back.
We might have him back up here.
Hey, caller, you're on the Ledge Radio Show. You, you there, caller? No, I don't know what we're doing over here.
Give us a call back, because you're right, you're right.
Sick Rick, well, he can't work the phone.
Rick's pushing a lot of buttons over there, you know what I mean? Stop pouring your coffee, Rick. Walk away from the roller.
Uh, call back in, people, uh, it's 277-9600, or 775-9600. The area code's 239...
Rick can't point to nobody else. It's him.
From now on, from now on, we want you there, we want you here at 7:30, showered and ready to go, no more parachuting in at the last minute.
We don't want pajama day here, okay? He comes in with pajamas wearing them, you know, what are you doing, Rick?
I live close.
He says, uh, you want to give me a Sandusky hug?
All right, he thinks we have a caller on. Let's check. Caller, are you on the line?
Go ahead.
Yes, no?
Hey, this is J.D.
It is.
Hey, it's my Garofola.
Oh, Garofola, what's up, Mike?
Hey, I got a solution for them kids on the bus. Maybe we should give them shock collars as well, you know? Electrify their seats.
I, I'm with it, man.
Give them an old-fashioned beatdown.
Hey, you, you see the newest thing they got? They got those sneakers with ankle, um, handcuffs. Have you seen that?
Well, you know why, though.
That'd be beautiful.
That's great, man.
But it's because those shoes are like 400 bucks, they put a handcuff on, so you gotta cut their leg off to steal them.
That's it, man, that's, I like it.
It, it's a big controversy.
Two parts for one stone.
Well, I tell you what, you know, I, I think the shock collar idea, that is a good idea. You may, you may have some people object to it, but, um, maybe when the kid raises his voice a little too much, and it just shocks him a little bit, he, he'd calm back down. I, I agree with you.
That's what I'm saying. Maybe you can look for like some kind of vocabulary or something in the thing when they say the wrong word, it shocks them, you know?
Be like sexual Tourette's or something.
Hey, thanks, Mike. We appreciate the call, buddy.
Thank you. Have a good day, boys.
All right, thanks, man.
Alrighty.
That's great. I like, that's actually a good idea, shock collar.
Yeah, shock.
You ever try that?
Yeah, no.
For real?
Some people actually pay money to have a ton of them.
Well, I had a dog one time, and, and I guess you're, it, you know, you gotta use it to either help, it, I don't know what it's used for. I forget now, training him not to bark, or training him not to pee, or...
Not to run the road is what's supposed to be a boundary where the dog runs, and he gets this, you know, slight shock on his neck, and it backs him off.
Well, my dog, every time he, every time he'd bark too much, it would shock him, so I would poke him, just to make him bark, and he'd go, "Ooh", and he'd shock, bark, shock, bark.
Nice. Was that before you started drinking?
No, not really. I'm just kidding. No, all animal rights activists, that is not correct, probably not.
It's a show. Argh, sorry.
Shock, bark, shock, bark. Anyway, hey, I got, we've only got five minutes, dang. Well, let me see what else, let me see what we get we can fit in for five minutes, because I had something really good. We had the, uh, House Oversight Committee that found Eric Holder in contempt of the Fast and Furious scandal. Had video, uh, audio on it and everything, but I don't think we're gonna get time to get to it.
You could, you know, we got five minutes, you can touch base on it if you want.
All right, well, I, let, let me, uh, let me just go over it real quick. All right, all right, so anyway, here's, I want to give you the history of it real quick.
No, just, just hurry up and make it fast.
I have to. I have to. All right, so, Fast and Furious, all right, it, it broke when Brian Terry was killed, the, the border agent was killed, right?
Everybody knows it was, it was a gun-running thing that they were trying to scheme to track the guns.
That's what they, that's what they made you believe.
And it went awry, it went bad.